Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Shawn Atkins and I'm the Chair of the East Point Planning and Zoning Commission. At this time, I'd like to call our April 19, 2018 meeting to order. Staff, would you please sound roll call to establish a quorum?
Commissioner Lovett?
Present.
Commissioner Bell?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Fan?
Here.
Commissioner Atkins?
Present.
Commissioner Tucker? Commissioner McKnight?
Here.
Commissioner Maxwell? Commissioner Mitchell?
Present.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we take a moment of silence. So if you would all, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. If you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to adopt our agenda as printed.
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner Miller, that we adopt the agenda as printed. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The agenda is adopted. Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to approve our March 15, 2018 meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Miller?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Mitchell, that we approve our March 15, 2018 meeting minutes. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. Our March 15, 2018 meeting minutes are approved. Our next agenda item will be our cases for this evening. We've got four cases, all of which require public hearing. At this time, I'll read the rules for our public hearing, after which time, I'll ask staff to sound the first agenda item, and then I'll open the public hearing. Public hearings before the Planning and Zoning Commission shall be conducted in accordance to Section 10-2219 of the East Point Zoning Code and Development Regulations as follows. Persons both favoring and opposing the proposed case will be provided an opportunity to address the commission. The applicant for the zoning case or the applicant's designated representative, if any, will be entitled to speak first, followed by other speakers in favor of the proposal for a total of 15 minutes. Those who oppose the proposed zoning case will be permitted to speak for a total of 15 minutes. By majority vote, this commission may increase the total time for speakers, provided that each side is given the same amount of time. If there is more than one speaker for a side, the Chair or the presiding officer may limit the time allotted to each individual speaker other than the zoning applicant. The zoning applicant may reserve a portion of his or her allotted time for rebuttal. Speakers must adhere to the rules of decorum. Prior to speaking, each speaker shall identify him or herself and state his or her current address. Each speaker shall speak only to the merits of the proposed zoning decision under consideration, shall address remarks only to this commission, and shall refrain from making personal attacks on any other speakers. The presiding officer may refuse a speaker the right to continue if, after first being cautioned, the speaker continues to violate the rules of decorum. You've heard our rules for public hearings. At this time, I'll ask staff to please sound our first agenda item.
Case number 2018V-003-03. The applicant is Roman P. Dean. The location is 1953 Broad Avenue. Applicant seeks a variance to increase square footage greater than 50 percent of the average footprint of the homes within the infill compatibility survey area.
Thank you. At this time, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner McKnight, that we open the public hearing for case number 2018 via Zinvictor-003-03. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now open. Is the applicant present this evening? Roman P. Dean?
Yes, sir.
Would you please step to the podium, state your first and last name, and your current address, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Council, for having us today. My name is Roman Dean, and I'm at 1953 Broad Avenue, East Point, Georgia.
You can present your case.
Yes, sir. We wanted to increase our home. I'm going to actually introduce my wife, Bree Duke, to explain the hardship for us a little bit better.
She just needs to state her first and last name and her current address as well.
My name is Bree Duke, and the address is 1953 Broad Avenue.
Okay.
You can go ahead and speak, hon.
Me?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, first, I just want to say that we love East Point. This is our home. My husband is a native, and he brought me here 10 years ago, 2009.
It was about 2009.
Almost 10 years ago. And at first, I was really hesitant, like, "East Point, okay." But it's home now, and the home we live in belonged to Roman's grandmother. I believe she was their original owner.
I'm a native, but my family's been here for over 75 years in the same homes.
Please speak into the microphone, Mr. Dean.
Yes, sir. My home has been, my family's been here in East Point for over 75 years. My parents, my grandparents, we have four generations of our family that live here in East Point, and we love it. And we want to stay here and continue to live here and grow, and we hope we present us the opportunity to have our family here. So I'll go ahead and turn it back over to you. Go ahead.
Okay. Our, let's start. Our dream is to stay here, raise our family here. We have four children, one daughter. Her name is Olivia. She's named after Roman's mother, who passed away in 2016, and our daughter, Olivia, is growing up in the same bedroom his mother, Olivia, grew up in, you know? Which we would love to keep it that way, stay here, raise our children here, but we simply need more space. We have two widowed parents who are coming to live with us, four children, and two bedrooms and one bath currently. We don't want to do anything extravagant, or just enough to live, be comfortable, less chaos.
And to take, and to take care of my family. They're getting older. My, my father and her, my mother-in-law, they're getting to the age where they need extra care. We need to present a place where we can keep them at home, take care of them, and watch them. I have four children that they need a little bit more space to, to spread out. They're getting older, and we just want to be able to present it. And what we're presenting right now is the original size of our home was, I think it was 1,334 feet, and we want to expand it to 2,800 feet.
2,800 square feet?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes. Could you just please speak into the microphone, please, Mr. Dean?
Apologize, sir.
Okay.
2,800 is square feet is what we want to expand it to.
The maximum.
The maximum.
Okay.
And do you have anything else to say? I think that's, that's all we have, and we just owe the mercy to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents here to speak to this zoning case? You can have a seat.
Thank you.
Any other proponents here to speak to this zoning case? Anyone else in favor? Are there any opponents here to speak against this zoning case? Any opponents here to speak against this zoning case? Seeing none, Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Close.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner Miller, that we close the public hearing for case number 2018 via Zinvictor-003-03. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Case number 2018V-003-03. The applicant is Roman P. Dean. The location is 1953 Broad Avenue. Staff recommends approval to increase square footage greater than 50 percent of the average footprint of the homes within the infill compatibility survey area with the following condition: Total residential building square footage shall not exceed 2,900 square feet.
Okay, all right. Commissioners, you've heard from the applicant. You've also heard staff's recommendation. At this time, I entertain a motion. Let us not all speak at once.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, that we approve this motion, case number 2018 via Zinvictor-003-03. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
Mr. Chair, point of clarification. Mr. Fan, did you intend to make that a motion to approve with the condition of staff or without the condition of staff?
Yes, Mrs. Levy.
With the condition of staff.
Yes, Mrs. Levy.
Okay. Okay, Mr., Commissioner Fan's motion is for approval with staff's conditions. Ms. Lovett, does your second still stand?
Second, yes.
Okay. Synopsis, summary of the motion. The motion on the floor is to approve this variance for the Dean family. Motion made by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, with staff's condition. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. Your motion is, your variance is approved.
Thank you.
All right.
We, Commissioners, we fight.
Our next agenda item is 2018 via Zinvictor-005-03. Staff, would you please sound this agenda item?
Case number 2018V-005-03. The applicant is Technique Concrete Construction. The location is 2953 Park Street. Applicant seeks a two-part concurrent variance to reduce the five-foot side yard setback to zero feet and minimum width of driveway from 12 feet to 10 feet for the installation of a driveway.
Thank you. Commissioners, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing for case number 2018 via Zinvictor-005-03.
Moved that we open public hearing.
Okay, Commissioner Mitchell, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Mitchell, seconded by Commissioner Miller, that we open the public hearing for this agenda item. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now open. Is Technique Concrete Construction present this evening?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Please step to the podium, state your first and last name, and your current address, sir.
Good evening. My name is Melvin Griffin. I'm an employee of Technique Concrete Construction. My current address is 3651 Walnut Creek Way, Lathonya, Georgia, 30038. What we are seeking is a variance to reduce the setback from five feet to zero and the width, the variation of the width from 12 feet to 10 feet. And what we are seeking to do is to extend the driveway to the rear of the property and allow, have access for the car to turn around and drive back out rather than having it back out into the street. The existing driveway was deteriorated, and we had, had to be replaced in a way because of the condition of it. So in doing that, we tried to extend it to the rear and give the occupants of the property the most freedom in moving the cars around. And this property here, 2953 Park Street, is one of three properties that we own on Park Street. Our property at 2963 and 2979, 2969 and 2979. What we're seeking the variance on is 2953. We've already renovated the property. We bought it as, renovation had been started by someone else, but we finished the renovation, you know, inside and out. And so we'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to make our presentation, our case for the variance, and we wanted to make the property as livable and as user-friendly as possible.
All right, thank you. Is it Richards? Is that the last name?
Melvin Griffin.
Griffin.
Griffin, G-R-I-F-I-N.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning case? Any other proponents? Are there any opponents here to speak against this zoning case? Anyone here to speak against the zoning case? Seeing none, Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Moved that we close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Mitchell, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, that we close the public hearing for case number 2018 via Zinvictor-005-03. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Case number 2018V-005-03. The applicant is Technique Concrete Construction. The location is 2953 Park Street. Staff recommends approval of the concurrent variance Part 1 to reduce the five-foot setback as required in Section 10-4050 to zero feet for the installation of a driveway. Staff also recommends approval of concurrent variance Part 2 to reduce the minimum width of driveway from 12 feet as required in Section 10-4057 to 10 feet.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, you've heard from the applicant, Technique Concrete Construction. You've also heard staff's recommendation. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner Mitchell, that this body approves the two-part variance, reducing the side yard setback from five feet to zero and the minimum width of the driveway to 10 feet. Commissioners, I'd also like for you all to remember that, as discussed in work session last week, we may need to consider a reduction in the driveway width from staff's recommendation of 10 feet to nine feet three inches. And so if a Commissioner would like to make a friendly amendment to that, I'd be very happy to hear one. Yes, Commissioner Miller?
I would like to make an amendment to shave the requirements down to 10 feet to 9.4.
Mr. Mitchell, will you accept that friendly amendment?
Did she accept that as the friendly amendment? I did the second, I believe. Did I do the second? I, I did the second.
Hold on, Mitchell, Mitchell made the motion. Lovett seconded it.
My bad. Yes, I do accept that as, as a friendly amendment. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Lovett, does your second still stand?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
What is the rationale to reduce from 10 to 9?
9.
What's the rationale?
Yeah? It's not true.
Okay, okay, all right. It is consistent, so.
Yes. Okay. All right. The motion on the floor, Commissioners, made by Commissioner Mitchell, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, amended by Commissioner Miller, is that this body approves a variance to reduce the side yard setback from zero, from five feet to zero feet and the minimum width of the driveway, driveway from nine feet to nine feet three inches. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and the variance is approved, Mr. Griffin. The next agenda item is 2018 via Zinvictor-006-03. Staff, would you please sound this agenda item?
Case number 2018V-006-03. The applicant is Steve Bennett. The location is 2443 Woodland Circle. Applicant seeks a two-part concurrent variance to reduce the five-foot side yard setback to zero feet and minimum width of the driveway from 12 feet to 10 feet for the installation of a driveway.
Okay. Commissioners, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing for 2018 via Zinvictor-006-03.
Motion to open the hearing.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner McKnight, that we open the public hearing. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now open. Former Commissioner Bennett, would you please take the podium, state your first and last name, and your current address?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's Steve Bennett, 1949 Montrose Drive, East Point, Georgia, and I hope you'll bear with me. I've been battling a cold a while, and I don't have much of a voice.
Okay.
But my, my request is very similar to the previous. We are requesting the two-part variance on the setback and the width. This was a house that was built in the 40s. The original driveway's been there since the early 50s, and disrepair and whatnot. It was built, like many of them in East Point, on the property line and narrower than the 12 feet. And basically, the way the lot is, it's on a steep incline, has a retaining wall on each side, so moving it or widening it just wasn't going to work because there are about 36-inch retaining walls on both sides in the front. So that was the reason we had to keep it where it was. And so that's pretty much the gist of it, is that it, we put it right back where it's been for the last 60 years. And as I stated, I've been fighting a cold, so I apologize if I wasn't at work session. So I am available if you have any questions at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Are there any other proponents here to speak to this zoning case? Any other proponents here to speak to this zoning case? Are there any opponents here to speak to this zoning case? Any opponents to speak against this zoning case? Seeing none, Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner Miller, that we close the public hearing. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Case number 2018V-006-03. The applicant is Steve Bennett. The location is 2443 Woodland Circle. Staff recommends approval of concurrent variance Part 1 to reduce the five-foot setback as required within Section 10-4050 to zero feet for the installation of a driveway. Staff also recommends approval of concurrent variance Part 2 to reduce the minimum width of driveway from 12 feet as required in Section 10-4057 to 10 feet.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard from the applicant. You've heard staff's recommendation. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner Miller, that this body approves the variance to reduce the side yard setback at 2443 Woodland Circle from five feet to zero feet and the minimum driveway from 12 feet to 10, minimum driveway width from 12 feet to 10 feet. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. Case number 2018 via Zinvictor-006-03 is approved, Mr. Bennett. Thank you. Our next agenda item is 2018 via Zinvictor-004-03. Staff, would you please sound this agenda item?
Case number 2018V-004-03. The applicant is SPG Creekside LLC. The location is 2135 Lawrence Avenue. The applicant seeks to reduce the zoning buffer where adjacent to residential from 100 feet as required within Section 10-6008D to 25 feet.
Thank you. Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing for case number 2018 via Zinvictor-004-03. Yes, Commissioner Miller? Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, that we open the public hearing for this agenda item. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now open. Is the representative from SPG Creekside LLC present this evening?
Yes, sir.
Please step forward, state your first and last name, and your current address. I can't tell you which one, sir. Please step forward, state your first and last name, and your current address.
Yes, sir. My name is Mal Hill, 2870 Peachtree Road, Atlanta.
Okay. Say your name again, please.
Mal, M-A-L, Hill.
Okay.
All right. Let's see. Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. A little background. Solution Property Group is my company. We are the developer of the redevelopment across the street from this site at 2135 Lawrence Avenue. It's an award-winning Class A industrial facility that is the largest Class A facility inside 285 in East Point, and it's actually the largest facility of its kind inside the Ring Road 285 and won a national award for the development that we did there. By way of background, what got us here tonight is in our marketing efforts, and we've had Walmart in there for a while, and they were very happy, but in our marketing efforts, we have not had enough parking to secure some of the higher employee count facility requirements, and we've lost them to Fairburn, Palmetto, and specifically College Park. To address that, we approached our friends across the street who had a legacy site, Georgia Pacific, and asked if we could purchase some of their property. We worked that out. We went through the process and owned the 9.4 acres, the 2135 Lawrence Avenue that we're here talking about tonight. The question that came up in work session, which is a relevant one, is why, why did we apply for a variance? And specifically, the reason we applied for the variance is the reduction down to 25 feet is actually what we thought was our legal entitled right based on the publicly available information. And specifically, that, that's what created this hardship. So from your East Point website and municipal code, Section 10-2159.1, parking and loading locations, right underneath that, it says, "Note, the minimums required in this subsection may be less than the requirements necessary to accommodate the landscape area buffer requirement of Chapter 6." Rest of it talks about trees. Subsection F, which applies to us, I-1. I-1 and I-2 industrial districts, off-street parking, which is what we were attempting to supplement so we could secure some of these tenant requirements. The off-street parking location regulations for dwelling schools, institutions, similar uses are the same as those in the A district. Uses devoted to manufacturing, warehousing, commercial, and other uses permitted in the industrial districts shall, shall provide no off-street parking within 25 feet of any property line which adjoins a residential use or district. Obviously, an intelligent person goes back to the previous initial sentence. We have to cross-reference Chapter 6. We go to Chapter 6, Section 10-6008, dot. Minimum landscape strips and buffers. Subsection D. Zoning buffer should be provided where adjacent any residential as specified in Table 2. There is no Table 2. Doesn't exist. It's not on there. As a result, our lawyers and engineers calculated the usable acreage that we could actually pave under the entitlements. When we submit for an LDP, instead of the 25 feet that we paid to have engineers do, they said, "No, it's 100 feet." We're like, "Where?" As a result, the hardship that's impacted on us is 1.4 acres, which is the difference between 100 feet and 25 feet times the depth of our site, which is 820 feet, comes up to 1.4 acres of land that had we known it was 100 feet. Had Table 2 been there, Georgia Pacific would not have charged us for it. So we've incurred a hardship of roughly $150,000 because the, there was an administrative error that's on the website. That also gets us to, one of the recommendations and noted in the staff rec, which was if a preference, or if we were granted relief for this zoning buffer, that it would be a preference to this site. We actually would suggest that if the website is fixed and that information is perfectly transparent and this issue comes up again, it would not be preferential to us because we didn't have access to the information of it being 100 feet. So the purpose of our variance is to try to get some relief to reflect the economic hardship impacted by the website error. Now I'd like to add that after discussing with our neighbors, we would actually prefer you to consider an alternative buffer reduction to 50 feet with planning in the first 10 feet. We don't believe there's any community support near us for 25, and 50 feet gets us to .94 more usable acres, and we're willing to compromise to that and willing to pay for the requested improvements to screen the neighbors and improve there, but let you listen to them if there are folks that will speak to that. The next item related specifically to the staff report to us is that there was no, no similar site that had this kind of a restriction. Our immediate neighbor to the south, Lucas Logistics, is zoned I-1. They, they have no restriction on them parking all the way up to their property line. Lastly, the entire point of what we're doing is not to operate something that's possible within I-1, but just to support the Creekside project to get some of these large employers into East Point, and particularly this older part of the city that hasn't seen some of the benefits that have gone to our suburbs, north and south, and College Park next door. To close, we, we request that you consider an alternate undisturbed buffer reduction of 50 feet with plantings in the first 10. We do have full-size drawings that show that, and we believe we have some folks that may speak in favor of it. Are there questions?
There will be no questions. This is a public hearing. Are there any other proponents for? I'm sorry, you were pointing at something. So if there's something that you want to show us during this time, please feel free to do that now.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to, uh, show you copies of the drawing that shows the landscape plan and the alternate requested 50-foot buffer reduction.
Well, are they all the same copy? So staff should have a copy for our official record? Did you send this to staff earlier? Okay. All the commissioners should have a copy of this.
And then, uh, lastly, we were requested in the work session for a tree save drawing. There, there was a copy electronically sent to staff, and then we also have a full-size print of that.
I'm, I'm sorry, the papers are rumbling. I'm gonna have to ask you in just one second to repeat that.
Uh, this is a different drawing. This came up in our work session. There was a request to look at our tree survey, and there's an electronic copy that was sent to staff, so maybe it's in your file, but we have a full-size print of this also.
As long as staff has it for our official record.
I'm all finished. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents here to speak to this zoning case? Any other proponents? Anyone else here to speak in favor? Please step to the podium, state your first and last name and your current address.
Good afternoon. My name is Dorothy Hall, and I reside at 1660 Woodbury Avenue, East Point, Georgia. Been a resident there and own my home for 33 years. I'm voting in favor of a line, uh, Creekside, a buffer of 50 feet from the property on the variance that they had requested, and we talked about it at the last meeting. I'm in favor of it. I do think that it would bring jobs to the East Point area. I used to be a, uh, employee of the city of East Point, written in the city manager's office, parks and recreation, and also, um, practicing. So I know some of the people on the board, but I would just like to say, if you all can grant them that 50 feet so construction can get started, I would be in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning case? Any other proponents? Please step forward, step to the podium, state your first and last name and your current address.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Sheila Leslie, and I live at 1674 Woodbury Avenue. And there's been a lot said about this buffer, and, uh, we've been back and forth, and definitely I'm against 25 feet. But I do say, um, I, uh, 50 feet is okay. But let me throw this in. I saw some coyotes this, the other morning. I went to my front window, and I guess now that, uh, the land has been disturbed, coyote, I've never seen a coyote since I've been living in East Point, but I saw one the other morning. So my thing is, uh, yes, 50 feet could be okay, but what others, what else coming out of that buffer besides coyotes? Something left to say?
Thank you, Ms. Leslie. We appreciate that. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning case? Please step forward, step to the podium, state your first and last name and your current address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Alex Crown, and my family, uh, has owned the property at 1690 East Woodbury Avenue for approximately 60 years. And I would like to say that, uh, my mom, that, uh, passed at 91 years old, bought and lived in that house and, uh, was thoroughly pleased in her, most of her later years. And I helped her for about seven and a half of those years in that house, and I am currently still there. I've listened to and met with, uh, my neighbors, and I've also had a pleasant opportunity to talk to the developer of one of the nicest buildings in the state of Georgia. I used to be with the State Chamber of Commerce, and I'm familiar with all 159 counties. I think his amendment proposal, if y'all so desire, of 50 feet is quite reasonable, and I think myself and the, the other neighbors, uh, would be more than happy provided that the buffer zone is, uh, completed the way that the developer has suggested and shown us what it would look like. I'm very much in favor of it, as you can see. I think it would be a big benefit to the city of East Point. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crown. Are there any other proponents for this zoning case? Any other proponents?
Good evening. My name is Rufus Leslie. I've been at 1674 Woodbury for about, I guess about 32 years. I moved here in 85, and I go along with the 50 feet buffer. It seems reasonable, 50 feet below my profit line in the back.
Okay.
It might keep some of the coyote or whatever, you know, I'd be waiting to start this construction.
Thank you, Mr. Leslie. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning case? Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents here to speak against this zoning case? Any opponents? Seeing none. Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner Miller, that we close the public hearing. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Case number 2018 V dash 004 dash 03, the applicant is SPG Creekside LLC. Staff recommends, the location is 2135 Lawrence Avenue. Staff recommends denial to reduce the zoning buffer where adjacent to residential from 100 feet as required within section 10 dash 6008 D to 25 feet.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard from the applicant, and you've also heard staff's recommendation at this time of entertaining motion.
I have one question.
We have to have a motion on the floor in a second before we have any discussion. So if you'd like to make a motion, and someone seconds that motion, then we can go into questions and discussion.
I move that we open the floor for conversation.
I think we have to, we have to have.
I made the motion for approval, uh, for the, uh, for staff approval, approval of staff recommendation for deny. I'll make that motion for discussion.
Okay, so your motion is to deny.
The motion is denied for discussion.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, that this body denies this variance application. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Commissioner Bell.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, I have a question for the applicant. So for this particular site, um...
Hold on a second. Mr. Gillum, would you please step to the, is that who you're speaking of?
Yes.
Okay, so please step to the podium.
So for this particular site, um, over the last two weeks, I've taken some trips there, and, um, I noticed there is a stop-work order on the site. So for, for the, um, for the viewing audience, can you elaborate on why that was issued and what activities was taking place on that site to, for a work, for a stop-work order to be issued?
Uh, certainly. Uh, and, uh, I'll share with you as much information as I have. Uh, I, I did not meet or talk to the inspector, but specifically, we engaged our landscape company, commercial, big commercial firm, to, we, we were asked for a couple of, uh, executive tours that were flying in these projects with a couple hundred jobs to improve the look of the site so that people could visualize the additional parking because we are short, oh, uh, well, anyway, let me just directly answer your question. So we had our landscaper come out and use something called a forestry mower. And what I under, and a forestry mower is specifically designed to not engage in any land disturbance activity, but it will chew up small brush and small trees that are a couple, three inches, whatever. But it is specifically not a land disturbance activity. However, when a forestry mower is used, it does chip up whatever it was grinding in that location. My understanding is, I'm not sure that the inspector knew what a forestry mower was, but it was specific, we engaged the landscape company to go in there and do that clearing, but provided they did not do anything that required a land disturbance permit, and we were told that we did not conduct any land disturbance activity.
Can you tell me when this took place?
Uh, the specific date?
Um, if you can give me a time, like a time range here.
Likely February, but we would have to dig up the contract with the vendor.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry, I was distracted. Could you repeat that? Because I had written that question down myself because I'd like to hear the answer to that.
Um, we believe it's likely February, but we'd have to dig up the contract with the vendor.
You believe that it's likely February?
Yes, because, um, but we can look it up. Nathan, who is here with me, actually would have transacted that with the vendor. So that's why I said we believe.
And while you're asking, while you're answering Commissioner Bell's question, I would greatly appreciate it if your colleague would look that information up. It is one of the questions that I had as well.
Sure. Okay.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions of the applicant?
I have a question. I'm sorry. Um, so what's cleared off now? Is that, I'm looking at this report here, is it the 40 feet, or is it, what's cleared off now? Because I, my biggest concern is, you know, so many trees are gone in that area.
Sure, so to...
Right, that's what I...
Right, so to back up, the site was, the site was owned by Georgia Pacific, so there's very, and that's part of why the tree save plan that's over here is relevant because that actually shows the specimen trees that would actually tie to an East Point ordinance other than land disturbance activity, but the forestry mower doesn't do that. But in general, we're not anywhere close, I believe, to either even the 100-foot buffer. There's just a section generally in the middle. The only reference I know personally that I have is relative to the big white oak that's on there, and it's on that tree survey because you can see that sort of standing there by itself, and then it's sort of back to where the topo begins to drop toward the back of the site.
I guess I should, I should be more specific. Um, but what I want to know is like, what's clear now? Because I don't, visually, I'm like, I don't know how many, you know, um, feet that is, but it just looks really clear. Is that 40 feet that's cleared now? Is it like, is there like a 40-foot buffer now, or?
Okay, yeah, no, in terms of what's cleared, it's not even up to the 100-foot buffer. So it's, we probably cleared somewhere in the three-acre range, maybe three and a half, or cleared, cleaned it up of the 9.4. So probably a third of the site. It, it shouldn't be anywhere close to a buffer, and I believe the inspector, when he went out there to, to stop work, there wasn't any work going on, but he put the stop-work on at any, at any way.
Okay, so I'll get more specific. Where you are now, uh, and I'm, I'm talking specifically on the, um, the area that's facing everyone's home, like their backyards, right? Adjacent to their homes. So how much for, further would you have to clear to, um, afford to be at the 50-foot buffer? Would you have to clear more trees? That's more trees than what is already cleared now in order to get to that 50-foot buffer?
The best way I know to explain it would be normally, to answer that, I'd have to look at a full set of land disturbance permit drawings that we would submit and go through that approval process to check all the regulations. I, I don't, uh, I can't specifically answer that. I'm used to just full sets of drawings, so I don't
Right.
know how to articulate it in a less specific way.
Okay, um, I'm gonna piggyback off of Commissioner McKnight's question. You said just now that you would have to look at a full set of land disturbance permit drawings to be able to answer her question. Is that correct?
That's the way I'm used to answering questions, um, but, but I'm, I'm also not used to doing public hearings.
Did you also know that you were coming here tonight for a variance to reduce, um, a buffer from 100 feet to 25 feet?
Yes.
Okay, so knowing that, would you not come to this public hearing prepared to answer those types of questions? And the reason that I'm making a point of this is because it was seven days ago, one week,
Yes.
that when we had some other questions of you, you stated in the work session that we have the entire set of land disturbance permits, and we can send those to the commission. Do you recall that?
We had an entire set of land disturbance drawings set for 100 feet, or, sorry, for 25 feet, which is what started the entire process, which were sent back.
Do you recall stating that you had a whole set of land disturbance drawings?
Yes.
Okay, so are you not familiar with those drawings and not prepared to answer questions from this commission regarding the amount of trees and brush that you've cut back on that property and how close it gets to the 100-foot buffer? Because what you're saying right now is that you're saying, I think it's this, it shouldn't be any closer to it than this. You're not speaking with certainty.
Okay.
Okay?
Understand.
And my challenge with that is that, in addition to knowing, when Ms. Leslie stated that the land had been disturbed and she's starting to see coyotes, so I was a bit taken aback because last week, Thursday, when your colleague stated no less than three times in the interest of full disclosure, you nor your colleague never disclosed that the city of East Point had issued you a stop-work permit, a stop-work order on that site. Is that correct?
I, I don't recall the question.
You don't recall?
No, no, no.
Let me tell you, let me tell you, let me tell you, let me tell you how I know you didn't mention it? Because I don't recall it, because Commissioner Miller didn't recall it, Commissioner Bell didn't recall it. None of the commissioners who were in that session recall the fact that the city had issued you a stop-work order.
Okay.
And we had an extensive conversation about different options. Could we do this? Could we do that? And it was never disclosed, even after your colleague talked about in the interest of full disclosure. So did you not think it was important to disclose that to this body?
I assumed everyone had that information. The stop-work order...
As the applicant, as the applicant, sir,
Yes, sir.
did you not think it was important to disclose the fact that your organization had gone out, and I don't want to hear about the landscaper did this and those kinds of things. You're responsible.
That's correct.
Okay?
That's correct.
So did it, did it not dawn on you at that time that that should have been a part of the discussion?
I, I had assumed it was in the record of everything. The, the stop-work order we were issued, I believe, occurred, Nathan, two weeks, three weeks? It was more than two or three weeks after the vendor was finished with their work.
Did your colleague find the date that the two occurred? Okay, all right, thank you. So we don't have that information. Another question to you, sir. What is the square footage of your building, the property that you own across the street? And by the way, I think it's a lovely building, and it's very well constructed. It was the first time that I saw it, um, here recently. What is the square footage of that building?
Uh, 538,500 feet.
Staff, how many parking spaces would be required for a building of such size?
Uh, from our calculations, that would be 269 parking spaces.
Okay. How many parking spaces are you proposing in this site plan?
Uh, 425, and the reason for that is, as the, the building is constructed, that's correct, but just the shell building, we have designed the building for up to five tenants, but our pro forma and the way the structure is set up and the projects we're tracking, we believe we're gonna have up to 70,000 feet of office space built out. And I do believe that in the East Point code, it's three per thousand on the office. And with shift changes, we'll easily use that 425 plus what we may have remaining across the street at the building. Our goal is to try to get 500.
The ordinance requires 269 parking spaces. Is that correct, staff?
That's correct.
For 538,500 square feet. You're proposing 425 parking spaces. Can you please help me to understand your hardship?
Uh, yes, sir. So for example, the average tenant that comes and looks at that, we have built a vanilla box. When they come in and they say, how many square feet do you want? 200,000 feet, and here's how many people we're going to have. We then will design and submit to the city for a building permit to build out the office, and as part of that requirement, the parking ratio requirement will go up. In general, buildings like this, anywhere in the state, one per thousand on the total square footage is a market ratio of the amount of parking these facilities typically need, particularly, and all we have to do is go to East Point and Amazon, and that Duke Park, when I worked at Duke, helped entitle that a decade or two ago. That's what's happening with warehouses. It's so much more... That's what's happening with warehouses. It's so much more people-intensive, and those folks need a place to park. And that's the reason we've been cut from a number of projects.
Is that a hardship?
The biggest hardship is related to not knowing about the 100 feet, and we would have gotten a deduction from the seller on the sales price, had that been easily...
That's your hardship?
Yes, sir.
Okay. For the record, that is your hardship?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned in your presentation to this body that your organization would, of course, pay for the requested screening for the part of the property that is adjacent to the homes on Woodbury. That would be nice, wouldn't it? Since your organization cut all those trees down, that would be nice, right? So are you saying that your organization may not pay for a replanting of the trees?
No, sir. The landscape plan we've submitted to you, we are proposing planting additional screening trees underneath the canopy within the buffer to help screen the homes from activity that may occur on that parking lot. In addition to the landscape, we are going to plant what's required under the East Point code related to landscaping. And that would be part of the LDP that we submit.
And a recompense for the specimen trees?
Yes, sir.
Have you figured that out?
That's what that tree survey that staff has a copy of shows.
What's your recompense total?
I don't know that number. But it may be on there.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions?
I just have one question to the one question. How many trees are you planning to plant, do you know, in all total?
How many trees related to the permission we're asking for to plant in the buffer, or are you talking about the entire site?
In the buffer, because you're finna make a pervasive surface, and water's gonna run off. Those trees actually drink a lot of water. We don't want to flood the people out in their backyard.
Sure.
So how many trees are you planning on putting there? Because they'll be back, they're talking about this parking lot, it flooding us out.
Sure.
So how many trees are you planning on planting in that buffer zone to catch that water runoff from the parking lot?
I'll answer that two ways. At the back of the site is where we would construct a detention pond to catch the water, to meet East Point and Georgia State regs. The specific number of trees is going to be on the, one of the drawings that are put on there. That should have the total, and we've got the type and everything else.
Commissioner Fan, just for the record, and I'm kind of trying to do the math in my head here, but in looking at the plan that's been submitted, they're proposing to plant 99 evergreens and 23 hollies in the buffer area. And it appears, just kind of running through the math, that there are 39 existing trees, at least on this legend. I assume that those are within TreeSave areas, they appear to be in the buffer. So there'd be 39 existing trees, and then 99 trees proposed to be planted, plus hollies.
And that's based upon a 25-foot setback, that's not based upon...
That is, that appears to be, if I'm reading the plan correctly, based upon the proposal that he's put forward this evening for a 50-foot buffer, a 40-foot undisturbed buffer, which has 39 existing trees in it, and then the 10-foot strip, which would have 99 trees, plus these now...
Leonard, could you just say it again, say it again? I missed that. Based upon what now?
Okay, based upon the plans that have been submitted by the applicant for the 50, the reduction down to 50 feet, as opposed to the 25 feet. Their plans are showing approximately 39 trees existing in that undisturbed buffer already, and then they are proposing to plant 99 additional trees. It's a little difficult, quite honestly, Commissioner Fan, to look at this plan and know whether tree grid, number one, and number two, showing existing trees are actually within that 50-foot buffer, because there's no 50-foot buffer line dropped on this plan. But that's my best interpretation on the fly.
All right, thank you. Thank you, that does help, thanks.
Commissioners, any more questions?
Question?
Yes, Commissioner Mitchell?
I know it's not required that you have them for us, but I'm interested in the type of lighting that you're gonna have out there in the parking area. And how will it affect the homes that are immediately adjacent to the parking lot? And what, and the type of illumination that it will give?
Sure. So just like the office area that we don't currently have built, for example, folks like Amazon and others, we know that there is a light ordinance within the city that obviously we'd have to comply with. We would typically use LED lights, but some large tenants have a national spec that they would give us, that we would then compare to your, to your specific code. But until we have a tenant that is going to specify what those lights may be and compare that to your code, we are not planning on putting any lights out there on a speculative basis. We would just pave a section of the parking lot without lighting.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Mitchell.
No, so...
I missed the, I missed the response about lighting, I'm sorry, can you...
I think the response was that it's tenant-driven, and they have no specific lighting plans for the parking lot, and at this point, there won't be any lights on the parking lot unless the tenant demands it. Is that a fair statement, Mr. Mitchell?
That is correct. And I'm looking up the check to the vendor to answer your previous question.
Commissioners, did you understand that response?
Interesting.
I'd be more than happy to repeat it. I want Mr. Hill to confirm that, in fact, that's sort of, I'm accurately paraphrasing what his answer to Commissioner Mitchell was. Commissioner Mitchell asked what kind of lighting there would be on the parking lot. My understanding from Mr. Hill's response is that lighting specifications are tenant-driven. They don't have any specific plans at this point in time for a particular lighting detail, and so construction of the parking lot at this point in time would be without any lighting. Is that a fair statement, Mr. Hill?
That is correct. That's better than a paraphrase. That's better than I can say it. Yes, that's accurate.
Okay, so what we're saying, since it's tenant-driven, if this is approved, then the neighbors, then your neighbors have no idea on the effect that lighting may have and affect the quality of life that they may have in that community until you get tenants in there, instead of being proactive and saying, "These are the type of lights that we will have to make sure that we do not disturb our neighbors that are coming out here to support us, because the trees will not be fully grown to what, 10, 15, 20 years down the line." So it's just interesting that, even though it's not required, that you would not have come in here proactively saying, "Look, we're gonna be good neighbors." We know lighting can affect and will affect, since it's only gonna be 50, what you're asking is 50-foot buffer, the quality of life that your neighbors will have. Just interesting.
Sure. So in my experience, when we've attempted to do this before, the sooner you can get any plantings in a buffer related to a different neighborhood, the faster the landscaping grows. But specifically to your lighting question, we are not, there is not going to be a tenant-driven issue that is going to prohibit us from keeping lights to not face the residences next door. That's a reasonable request. That's what I'd want if I lived in one of those houses.
You worked for Duke before you said?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I just...
Go ahead, Ms. McKnight.
Okay, I don't, I don't have a, it's not an actual question, it's just more of a statement, you guys. So one, I just wanted to make sure that it's clear and for the record, and I hope I can speak on behalf of everyone of the other commissioners here, is that we appreciate you guys being, as a business, in East Point, we do. And we're not being, we have two sides that we have to serve, both as businesses, businesses, as well as our residents, right? So our biggest concern, well, I'll speak for myself on this one. My biggest concern for the residents, especially those who homes, you know, their backyard, they had this beautiful, you know, trees that they were looking out on, and now they'll be seeing car lights, and, you know, because there's nothing that's kind of protecting them at all. So that's my biggest concern with how far, you know, how much more is going to be taken down from them or taken away from them in terms of their privacy that they once had? And whether or not that the buffer is just gonna be enough. So it's more of a statement, I think I really wanted to be clear. Because, you know, we do have a lot of questions, and we want to make sure that we're protecting everyone, okay?
Sure.
I just want to make sure that you know that.
Yeah, I mean, they came up in the work session, and again, this isn't supposed to be a dialogue, but I'm gonna say it anyway. We had discussed with our marketing firm, should we just come to the city for a variance when we have a specific tenant who's going to specifically locate on that property and then go through this variance process? The challenge is, when these tenants land at Hartsfield and they do their tour, they make a decision in 30 days, and you're either entitled to give them what you need, or you're not. In our case, we have not been, so we've just been cut. So we're trying to get closer to meet market, so we can get those employers in there and create the jobs.
I just, I'm gonna follow back up on this parking thing and the lighting. It perplexes me, and if I am being 100% honest, I think that you're not being absolutely forthright, and that is concerning me, because I think if, I'm feeling this way as a commissioner, and I felt very betrayed when there was no discussion about the stop-work order. I don't know what you're sharing with the residents there. As Commissioner McKnight just said, we want great businesses in the city of East Point. We appreciate all of our residential citizens, and we appreciate all of our commercial and corporate citizens, but we've got laws, and we've got rules, and we've got ordinances and all of those things. And knowing that you want to put in, your desire is to put in a parking lot that would accommodate 425 cars.
Yes, sir.
You've also stated this evening that the nature of the facility that you own across the street would accommodate shift work.
Yes.
Safety is a concern.
Yes.
And so to talk about a shift that would get off in the wee hours of the morning, and there's no lighting in the parking lot, but we can't even tell the property owners who abut that land what type of lighting they might expect to experience that would affect their quality of life? And in addition to the lighting, we also have to consider that you're talking about 420 vehicles. Not all of them are hybrids, meaning that they hum, okay? So you're talking about shift work, all hours of the night, vehicles starting and shutting off, and lighting, and all of those things, and you can't tell us about a lighting plan or the type of light that you want, that you're proposing to use, and all of those kinds of things? I feel very uncomfortable with this. And the more we discuss it, I feel even more uncomfortable. I just don't think that you're sharing all of the information, and I wish that you would, because it will help us make a decision. And as I'm sitting here looking out into the audience, I see some folks shaking their head that they don't believe you're sharing all the information either. This is, this is, this is very difficult. What we try to do as a commission, our job is not to sit here and to make it difficult for you, but let me tell you what we do have a job and a duty to do, to make sure that we are also looking out for those citizens who've been here. One resident, Ms. Hall, says she's been here 33 years. The Lesleys said that they've been here for 32 years. Mr. Crowe said his family has owned that property for 90 years? About 65 or 70 years. These are folks who have been here for a very long time. It would be remiss for us to just say, "Absolutely, yes, 25-foot buffer, any kind of light you want to put, no kind of barrier, all of that kind of stuff." We can't do that for the folks who've been here for a very long time. And by the same token, we want to be fair to you and amenable to what you're trying to do from a business perspective. But I can tell you this right here, it is very difficult to do that when I personally feel that you're not being forthright with the information.
May I speak?
I'm telling you, it is very difficult to make a decision in your favor when I feel that you're not providing all of the information. What would you like to say?
I'm sorry you feel that way, Mr. Chairman. To echo on Ms. Dunleavy's paraphrase, we are a service provider. There will be no vehicle activity on that site until we have a tenant, we submit building plans. The building plans would include whatever part of the parking lot that tenant would use. That would include the lighting plan. All of that would be submitted. The reason I cannot answer your questions in the detail you would like, you're asking me the questions that would be appropriate if we had the tenant identified or tenants. We have all their plans, we know all their specifications, and we'll have it down to exactly what height, light, how many lumens, the wattage, et cetera. But we're, it is all tenant-driven, so I can't answer that. I'm not the tenant. We're trying to provide flexibility to gain tenants in there. We have not been successful to date, other than Walmart, and we just had a small office for that that was submitted through the city. But there would be no parking, no lighting on that site until we have a CO on a space across the street that ties to that. And that's why I'm not answering your questions, because I don't know the answers. So I'm not trying to be untruthful.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Okay, I understand, where, you have something you want to say? It's me. Being community-friendly, neighbor-friendly, and proactive, there have been things that I've been used to, once being on this board and being as a city councilperson and mayor pro temp for this city, I'm used to having people coming forth with full details and full information. There's gonna be some things coming before this board that they, that will have lighting as a part of the recommendation, because the citizens have requested, because it will affect the quality of life. Your job, for your company, what you're trying to do, is to come with us, appease the citizens, do not affect their quality of life in a negative way, and lighting will do it. So you're basically saying, "Let's get this approved, we will put in lighting based on our tenants that are coming there." I don't buy that, and I don't think that's being totally, the best way to say it, friendly. You work with Duke, I worked with Duke, I had a great relationship with Duke. Mr. Fan, Commissioner Fan also has, and we know how they come to the community trying to find a win-win for both parties, and not having that is really disingenuous to me, knowing what's coming before this board with lighting involved in it. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'll call for the question.
Okay. Commissioners, Commissioner Mitchell has called for the question. The motion on the floor made by Commissioner Fan is to deny, it was seconded by Commissioner...
Second.
Was it Lovett?
Mm-hmm.
It was seconded by Commissioner Lovett. So the motion is to deny the variance. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The variance is denied, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is our announcements. Any announcements?
No.
Okay, from staff, any announcements from the commission?
I want to make an announcement that on May the 8th, at 6:30 PM at the St. Stephen's Missionary Baptist Church, 267 Hogan Road, there will be a forum with the candidates that's running for the Court of Appeal, the State Court, the Superior Court, and the Magistrate Court. We're inviting everyone to come out to hear from these individuals that's running for judges. Those positions are very influential and powerful positions, very important positions, and we need to know who these individuals who are trying to be judges in Austin County and state. So that'll be at 6:30 on May the 8th, at St. Stephen's Missionary Baptist Church, 2670 Hogan Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? For the record, as a commissioner, I would like to make sure if our reporter would please include this in our minutes, and also, staff, would you please relay the information to our interim director for planning and community development, Mr. Vincent Washington? The property that, at 2135 Lawrence Avenue, the clearcutting on that property, I do believe that the amount of clearcutting on that property is negatively affecting the quality of life of those residents living along Woodbury. And so I don't know what the recompense would be, or how the city would handle that, but I'd like to make sure that the director looks into that, and that there's something that is equitable for the residents living along Woodbury, as there's been so many trees cut down there. All right, thank you.
Well, as an addition to that, we may want to call the Georgia Department of the Natural for the Animals to just look to see, resource to see what, with, you know, statement coyote has seen over there. Maybe have them to come and look and see what's in those woods, because they may need to want to trap those coyotes, because we want to look... because, uh, we want to look out for the safety of citizens of this community, so if you would, add that in, uh, to Mr. Lee, so that we can make a recommendation that they look into that, thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other announcements at this time, Commissioner Lovett, you had an announcement?
No.
Okay. You're gonna make the motion, I got you. If there are no other announcements at this time, or entertaining, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I thought it was gonna be you, okay? Is there, is there a second? It's the move by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner, that we adjourn our April nineteenth, twenty eighteen meeting, all in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, this meeting is now adjourned.